Good evening, everyone. The LaPierce Community School Board of Education meeting is now called to order. We are going to begin with the pledge of allegiance, but I'm going to turn that over to you Superintendent Landry.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jeff Stanton, who has some special guests joining us from Zimmer this evening to use in the pledge, correct?
Well, I do, very special guests. So I have Young Marines here, so I have PFC Sparks, PFC Paris, who are both Zimmer students, and I have Master Sergeant Oak, who is a 10th grade LHS student.
Order.
So I asked them to come and say the pledge. They've been doing some fundraising and do a lot of great public service, great leadership group, so.
Please follow me as we say the pledge of allegiance. Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms.
Thank you. We always appreciate having guests. Okay, we will then go into our presenting school, so.
So you received an email from Mrs. Bradford earlier this week regarding the Zimmer presentation, going to be the introduction of a new board goal. And I wanted to just reintroduce Mrs. Bradford for the board's sake to kind of articulate why you're hearing the presentation about that board goal prior to the board being formally introduced at some point. So Bradford?
So we just finalized, we just tweeted, you know, the eight, twelve at the key opening and made some adjustments to it. And Zimmer is right on top of it and wanted to present that new goal over the way. So I will be presenting more after they're finished, but this is a synopsis of a new goal that you'll hear about later.
Or conversely, is his demonstration of Dr. Stanton's desire to undercut. Brand strength for the presentation of this new goal. I'll let you be the judge with that, Jeff.
Thank you. I wanted to see how Mrs. Bradford's under there.
I don't know if you can use the keyboard as well.
There we go. Okay, so as Mr. Bradford just said, board goal four, I'll read through the board goal. It is a new board goal this year, something required, you know, required by the state, something we've been doing, but something that should be a focus moving forward. And so we're going to talk about what that is and what we're doing here at Zimmer to make sure this is happening. So board goal four, foster an environment where all stakeholders are supported through improved whole child and safety and security systems. So the strategy for this, implement the whole child model and make connections between health and academic achievement and the importance of evidence-based school policies and practices. The benchmark for this is that 100% of the schools will support the 10 components of a whole school, whole community, whole child. So you'll see this graph here, and I'm sure Mrs. Bradford's going to have this in there too, but this is what the 10 components are of the whole school, whole community, whole child model. You'll see a lot of these things in here. We're only going to focus on a lot of them, but these are all things that the Michigan schools should be doing to promote the social, emotional learning of students in a great environment. So that includes physical education, nutrition, health education, social and emotional climate, physical environment, health services, counseling, psychological and social services, employee wellness, community involvement, and family engagement. So the one that, like I said, we're going to focus on here with this presentation is the social and emotional climate. And basically what that is, is the experiences that influence our students' social and emotional development. The climate of a school can affect students' engagement relationships and academics and positive social and emotional climates equal effective teaching and learning and healthy growth and development. So for us, this is coming at a perfect time, okay? This is the last year of Zimmer isn't being a building. Moving to next year being a seven, eight building, we had already discussed this before this was board goal and last year, what kinds of things were we going to do as we traditions? Things change a little bit when you're a seventh and eighth grade school, it's more of a traditional middle school. You know, and it's a great time to, as we've been saying, pull the bandaid off, okay? If there's ever a good time to kind of revamp what you're doing, it's this year because next year we're going to get a whole new group of students. The current sixth graders and seventh graders are all going to be coming over. So we thought as a staff, you know, this is the time we need to make changes, adjustments. It's going to be new for everybody here, so let's influence and do things. And it falls right in mind with this board goal. So we're going to talk about the things that we're been doing and so we're going to talk about what's already happening, things that we've been doing in Zimmer that's already happening, but also what's coming soon. We put a lot of things in place and a lot of work on this, and we've been able to see, and definitely it will hopefully reach that board goal, but definitely next year to create for a great new seven, eight building at Zimmer. So with that, I'm going to hand it over here to Mr. Cross, who is the associate principal and director, and he's going to do the next part.
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. As Dr. Stanton said, next year we're realigning to a traditional middle-level seven, eight building. So this year is really critical for us to implement, to foster, really grow the culture that we want to implement over the next several years at Zimmer. So we've kind of really approached this year with a emphasis, kind of not necessarily a reinvention, but a reemphasized focus on positive behavior direction support. So we're meeting monthly as an admin team with Mrs. Almond and Mrs. McGrath. We're also meeting monthly with our staff members who want to be part of our PDIS committee, which we have right around 10 right now, which is sort of a little not prepared what we've had in the past. We're pretty excited about that. Just a few things that we're doing here is we want to reward positive behavior. We don't want to obviously react and punish negative behavior. So when we see something positive, we want to reward it, and that comes in a multitude of ways. It's like bull bucks, teachers, staff members, see students doing something positive, someone drops something, how would they pick it up? A piece of garbage in the ground, they throw it away. They're helping our new student, nope, show it around the building. They get a bull buck, goes to a drawing, and then we'll pull those, we do the bull buck drawings weekly, and they can win any one of a number of prizes that are set out behind the, you know, cart in the main office. Lightning leaders are monthly students that are nominated by our staff members. They go into a bowl, if you will, and we select four each month. We give them a T-shirt, and they get some sort of reward, like a slushie or a chocolate smoothie, something like that, so it's kind of a way of rewarding the kids.
Want to the Dr. Stanton perhaps?
That's more of a prize than that.
Well, that was not planned, Jeff.
It's one of the options no kids have ever chosen. It's like lightning bug every time, or we must not play. So we also put their pictures up in the hallway, they go on social media, they go on our news letters to kind of put the face out there. Kids obviously have their picture taken with their parents, so that's really a positive thing for us. Something we started, graduate school, we have another honorable mention, the kids who were nominated, didn't make it, we still want to recognize them. We add that list up there with the kids, pictures go up in the hallway. That way kids kind of see like they were, they're not going on notice, you know. So the things we're doing this year, Lightning Fun Lunch is our first one of the year on Friday. We're going to start off with a little contest, each kid from each lunch table, each lunch table, I have a representative come up, they get a chance to, one time you'll have to throw something in the lunchroom without getting in trouble, play the pizza box, as far as my idea goes, pizza is a good club. They hook something in the session stand, so you got to plug that. And they get a, they want a bag of candy for their table. We've got cornhole boards, we're going to set up a cornhole later in the year. Mr. Trill is getting a portable backboard, put together the varsity basketball program, have a chance to hit a free throw to win some stuff for their tables. So this is kind of make it a fun environment, and it's not always kind of, you know, keep your grades out, PSAT, stuff like that, just kind of a laid-back thing that we think is going to go pretty well with kids. We have a tardy party coming up actually this Friday. We recognize them each semester, which is a pretty long time ago without being tardy once, but we do have a couple hundred kids that do it surprisingly. We're going to start recognizing them monthly with different boards, whether this month's going to be whether permitting, go outside on Friday, football around, kickball, dodgeball, stuff like that. Those are a few other things coming up, a compliment competition, trying to get kids to speak a little positively to each other, because we know that 13, 14, 15-year-olds always say the most kind things to each other, and a few other things, so. Have an idea what we want to do. I think that if things work well, we can kind of tweak them, find out how we'll want to use them next year, or if we find out, eh, they don't work out as well as we thought, set it aside, we try to come up with something new for next year. Just kind of a quick overview of some of the things that we're currently doing and some things we've been planning on doing throughout the year at Zimmer in regards to improving our positive climate and that goal.
Mrs. Almond, you're up.
Yes, I'm Karen Allen, who will be coach at Zimmer for Rock and Roll, for about a minute. I get to talk about some of the other things that are existing already in the building, but that really we can use to leverage the goal that we're working towards. So you've heard me talk about the positivity project, positivity project P2. It's a non-profit organization that partners with schools, and it helps us explore the idea of how to build positive relationships with other people. So we're just getting started for the year, but last week we learned about teamwork. Every week we get to go up sign a different character strength. So last week during teamwork week, one I connect chose to break into teams of four and we're kind of doing self hustles together. I think some of them have done self hustle in a long time. They loved it and wanted to do it again the next day. So but during teamwork week, they also got a chance to kind of explore, what does it mean to be a member of a team? Think about their role, if they could play on teams, it's a really chance for them to reflect on that strength and where it lies for them. And that bracket right there is another teacher. She made that with her class, they took a survey to see what their biggest strengths were, and that's a word cloud. So every time you put the word in, it gets bigger. So you can see for that particular class, love and humor, those were two really big strengths for that class. It's kind of a cool visual to see. So that's something that we think we can use, it happens Mondays and Wednesdays during our I connect, and we can use it to continue to grow the goals that we have. What do I do? Keep it going, okay. Okay, there we go. Another thing that exists is our teacher professional learning, but something really great happened last week that just got me all excited. So we always do something called teacher instructional rounds, it's one of my favorite days of the year. Teachers get a sub for an hour, and then they get to go visit other classrooms, and we collect their notices all day long. And you can see, it's not a pretty picture, but that's just a snippet of what my wall looked like at the end of the day. There was chart after chart after chart of the things teachers were noticing related to student center practices and related to things that we're doing that are helping to build a positive climate at the school. So tomorrow at our staff meeting, we're going to take this big four-page list, and we're going to start to kind of like look through it for strengths and trends, things that we definitely want to hang on to as we transition to seven, eight. Things that maybe are missing from the list that we want to make sure are there by next year. And so then we'll be able to use that thread every single month when we get it together and deal with the staff. So the teacher input in all of this is crucial, and it's one of my favorite days of the year, it's a super positive day, and it was a great way to get started with all of this. This one's probably my favorite one to talk about, I'm glad I got to talk about this one. You all know that the Leader Fund does these really generous power project grants. Last spring, we had our grant and we're meeting and talking about what are the things we can do with it, and we kind of decided, you know, there's all those fun day projects, right? All the things, if you had a little extra pocket in a month, you had a little extra time to research something. And we said, let's take a look at the things that we would like to have in hand and already have practiced using as we transition to a seven, eight building. And so we didn't just go with one thing, we're piloting a bunch of stuff this year. So Dr. Stanton's pet project is gaming system, he's going to be the gaming club up and running at Zimmer. We have an adoptive shelf library program. We have kids who have applied to be like a guest librarian for the month, and they're choosing book recommendations, they're decorating their shelves. So just like when you go to the bookstore and you can see all the staff recommendations to the kids, we've backed down too. I brought this because no one knows what it is. So we've talked to you before about how hard it is to get a good experience to talk out loud in class sometimes, right? So we were trying out a couple of these, it's called a cue ball, problemic phone. I didn't bring the speaker, so we can actually show you how it works, but literally it's a, you know, squishy like a kickball, you can drop it and it shuts off, so it won't squeak, it senses movement, it doesn't make any noise at all. But when it's holding still, then we can talk into it. And the best part is it's really easy to sanitize too, so you can pass it around and not worry about it again, not worry about it breaking, or, you know, germs don't. But probably my favorite thing, the one that kind of came out of the blue, was looking at some different movement opportunities for kids. So Nancy Roberts is here, she teaches English, her room is right next door to my office, and she's always like anything, she's willing to try out everything that I want people to try. So Nancy's going to tell us about something she's doing.
So this is my sweet little girl Alex in Ford Tower, and she is using a stationary cycling, like movement bike, okay? And we have one, we got it with the Leader Fund money, grant money that we apply for, Karen, that is a bunch of stuff. And she got it out of the box, and I said, I didn't even tell her, I took it, and I was like, here, you're using this immediately, immediately. The kids come to class early, can I use this? We only have one, because we're trying to figure out which, we're not, we're not. I recommend ten per classroom minimum. Teachers come to me, they're, can I borrow one of them? No. Me right now, my babies are using it, I'm piloting this. The kids come to class, they want to be the first ones there so that they can use it, they get tired of it, they just hand it over to somebody else, and somebody gets an opportunity to use it. We're looking at finding maybe one that's maybe a little bit stricter, just because their kids using it all day long. It needs to be something that's going to last for a while. My children are more focused when they're using it. I mean, you can, she had no idea I was taking this picture. Usually if I get my camera, like my phone out, they immediately know, what are you doing? She had no idea that I took this picture. She's working and she's just pedaling away. I've seen that the kids that are using this, their test scores are increasing, so that's a positive for me because they're more focused on what they're doing and not as disruptive. So we're promoting this 100%, and I know we got some movement chairs that someone will be piloting, so we'll see how those come, but this is 100% right now at Zimmer.
I'm Mr. Ling Yan, and I am the man for the equal treatment, half president at Longwater and half president at Zimmer. So as we are moving ahead with this year and looking to next year, with all that they shared, there's definitely some things that we want to make sure that we share with you that we're focusing on. One being that we're starting to talk about and propose new electives as we go into seven, eight building. So we're looking at electives that involve movement and, of course, high interest to kids. But when I say movement, not just your traditional PE, but allows them to get up and do things related to whatever, you know, the topics of interest are. Creative scheduling as well. We're looking at how we can change the scheduling of our day to provide more collaboration for teachers, especially across content. Additionally, we are focused on making the transition as soon as possible for our kids that are at Longwater and are going to be coming to Zimmer next year. So we're having meetings about what will that look like and how are we going to present opportunities for them to come and see Zimmer beforehand and just be part of it and feel like they're a part of it when we get. And finally, as Karen had mentioned, with the instructional rounds starting at the beginning of the year, we're really excited about how we're going to use that feedback from teachers to really help guide and create our vision. So when we begin the year next year, we kind of have, this is Zimmer, this is what, this is who we are, this is what we want our kids and staff to be.
Okay, and that brings us to the end. So just to kind of wrap it up, go full circle back to the board goal, the health and wellness of kids is really important, and it's important that, you know, you hear about it a lot now, and it's important that the M.I.K., the Michigan's requiring even this whole room. So all these things, it's a little different than what we normally do, we're talking about instruction, but all these things have an impact on our students, and, you know, we want to align on a school. How many kids love middle school? If you look back at their middle school years, on length as a middle school, it's awkward. But we're trying to add these things to create an environment, because the research shows that environments like this, it's can drive them, and academics improve, and, you know, this is just the diversity iceberg, and so we're hoping to add a lot this year, and, you know, what we'll be actually looking at. Thank you. Thank you.
Questions, Karen? I think this is great. I mean, this is the perfect age group to capitalize what you guys are doing. Because like you said, it's an awkward stage, and kids are starting, and they're like, I don't really want to go to school, and I don't really want to gain scores, or I don't want this. That's kind of that age, and this kind of helps them bring it all together. That's really neat. And I'm kind of glad you brought back the topic. Oddly, they have competitions, did you guys know they have group competitions? I'm the fastest person who could have ever did it.
Be surprised at how many kids, we use it as a resort and practice too, so kids get, you know, arguments, things like that, we bring them in, and we'll say, hey, you know, I'm here to work this out. Put a puzzle in my office, we put puzzles up there, and they do it, and like, I start my foot and the piece is over, she's.
You'll be real trouble when they move together and it's upside down, and we're bringing it back.
I like that, I like that.
The pedal bike, does it keep track of the miles?
Yes.
Okay, because I was going to say is that, you know, you set it up as a goal for the class, you know what I mean? And then you can say, hey, we did this many miles from LaPierce to, you know, wherever, and then LaPierce to wherever, you know? Say, guess what, this week we traveled from here to there, you know, and maybe encompassed it with, you know, whatever your study, you know? But then everybody gets a chance to add a mile or two or whatever, you know? So just, I didn't know, if it didn't, I was going to say the next one, make sure.
Oh, no, it does, it has, and it'll show you like how much time they spent pedaling as well as the mileage. There's a couple more things on there, we were kind of like, yeah.
Yeah, all the stuff would be on like that.
Okay, cool. Great.
Great. Thank you, guys, too, we always appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is public comment, but I don't see any public comments this evening, so we will kind of write into presentations. So I will turn it over to you, even though I know this is Michelle's most favorite board goal.
It is. Our board meeting is kind of anticlimactic because. Very, very good goal, but I also think that the board recognizes that while the schools present here, it is a snapshot of how one school is applying a practice of a particular goal, right? And it manifests differently in the buildings, but the flavor of what we saw today from Zimmer is really a model for what we hope to see at the secondary building, but it will look different at high school. It's a little different than most schools, and Ellen just said, right? So, you know, Michelle's portion, although, you know, is, you know, her work is driving the leadership of this, it's more comprehensive because she's, she has to engage with the professional development supports, the creation, the maintenance, the measurement of these goals. And holistically, K-12, she's the person directing how these goals manifest in the individual building, so that.
I think it worked out really well that they did process, because I'm going to go through all of our board goals, this is just one additional. We identified, well, you already know.
Yes, we can say right keyboard.
Okay. You already know that, you know, we have goal one, two, and three, focus on those keywords, like quality, curriculum, instruction, and collaboration with that multi-tiered system of support embedded in it. That was a safe requirement to put a process to our goals. We've been spending so much time on, and remember, this, we peers, and they all work together, it's not just, you can't focus on one thing or another, they all work simultaneously. We have this environment out there, and we were trying collaboration to it, and then I'm looking at our full team and all the committees that we have gone on, and with the requirement of the whole child, and it, you know, these are ever-evolving, they're not stagnant. It just makes sense to put the whole child within the environment and safety and security. We're spending so much time with C-Stacks and safety and security improvements and changing policies and procedures that it is a goal, it is for the environment. So we embedded it, it's still within our gears, and we love this visual because in education, you kind of get some lockdown with, oh, there's something new, something new. But are we all fitting within those cards and are those gears? And are they all working together simultaneously to, for the best interest of our kids? So I think it really worked out well, again, this is evolving. Collaboration and collective advocacy is not one, but it's part of management. While management is part of those gears, it's the collaboration that we have with our stakeholders. Tonight you're going to see so many committees that are going on at the district level, building level, the parent level, that the management and having a belief of that collective advocacy, that we know collectively, if all this can work for our kids, is very important in any meeting, even with the board meetings that we have. So I'm very pleased with that direction. So this is the new goal we've heard about, and again, if I presented that, because I don't spend a lot of time on the actual goal language, we can get into the meat of what's taking place in the buildings. So with that environment, foster an environment where all stakeholders are supported through improved, again, whole child and safety and security. We've broken it down into two benchmarks, you heard about one benchmark today, but there are two, who guide you the whole child. The measurement, since you already know about the goal, 10 components, they spoke out with the health, and there are 10, a lot of things that go with them. That is also part of our perception survey, that the state requires us to survey our stakeholders, that's our parents, community, students, and staff, and we have to take the time of questions from each of those components. That's why there's a question about food service. So we involve Joanne when we're doing a survey, you know, because we need to have a question about safety and security, about food service, about the health and wellness. It involves all those components. So it does make a beautiful, because it's also a state required. But one of our measurements is 75% approval rating on that annual consumption survey that we analyze. Another one is, as you know, the C-Stacks that the students are doing, and I know these are acronyms, and I personally use the acronym C-Stacks. 100% safety school threat assessment, I don't know. And SWISS? Did everybody? SWISS? System information, safety system information for each building. For each building.
You know, we all love when Michelle gets up and starts squishing.
SWISS has been around forever. Eight years ago, it was PDIS, Positive Behavior Support Systems, and that's still there, it's in our buildings. But how to track student behaviors and patterns in the building when I was principal, it was amazing because it's a new system, it's for positive behavior support, and you can track behaviors throughout the building, what time, if Johnny's having, and then it goes by students. So if Johnny keeps coming up several times, you can find patterns, such as he has during lunch, in certain class or, so it's really helpful to narrow down, okay, we need more supports on the playground, or we need more supports in the hallways during third hour, or.
And the secondary outcome of this is what we're finding, Rich made a passing comment about the tardy party, you know, we have several hundred kids that's qualified for it. Several hundred students who have no tardies for a entire semester, right? I know Jeff and I, as part, you know, all administrators are part of the administrative hearing process for students who face potential expulsion, we are, oftentimes will bring in SWISS reports on students to say, there were 35 interactions that your child had with administration that didn't happen, solved in a suspension or a consequence, but it was more about a conversation or redirect. Because oftentimes parents think that, you know, the administration, how do I get my kid? Well, you throw a report that says there were, let's say, in many cases, it is in the 30s or 40s, times of interactions, the student was referred to the officer behavior, where maybe only four, five, or six of them resolved in an actual suspension from school, is proof positive that the administration, teachers, and families. It's proof positive that the administration, teachers and counselors are doing everything in their power to address the behavior, not ignore it, but try to do something in a different way, alternative way to do it. One of the stats that we bring up in many of the hearings from students is, do you realize that only four percent of the students in this building had ever been referred to the office for anything? Meaning ninety-six or ninety-seven percent of the students have never been sent to the office for a referral or disciplinary consequence of any kind. So we, we wanna share that data with the community to be able to say, we hear things kind of blanket statements like, Zemmer's out of control. Things are running rampant at high school. Their kids are getting in trouble all over the place. Well, that's not what our data shows and we're not, you know, we're not hiding them all. We're, we're, we keep track of every single interaction with students. So in many cases, it isn't even, patterns is important about their student group of kids. But also there's a lot of positive feedback that we can, uh, discern from that and then share out. And I'm telling you, the number of parents that look at us like, what? Any Zemmer's, any Zemmer's in the office like, unless it's to see their counselor or, you know, pick up their lunch they forgot or lunch money or, you know, legally for a doctor's appointment. Those numbers are very consistent here every year. But it's, it is important, I think, side note of this.
So we spent some time at our K-12 meetings. That's why, um, they had thought of before you did. But we spent a lot of time on the language. So really how can we measure this goal? That's how, you know, we want it realistic that, and so anyway, we came up with, with the proper, and, and you think about it, with the proper whole child supports in place that includes environment, the health, the safety, all of those components, even staff wellness. We should, with those supports in place, we should see a five percent decrease in repeated behaviors. And then, and we'll check that two times. So that's, I think that's realistic that we can check that out with the perception survey. The other strategy and benchmark to this goal is, um, conduct third-party school safety assessments by anyone. We started that process last year, which I'm gonna get into in the next slide. Um, so our benchmark is a hundred percent of school, our district school analyze action plan to start that work from safety assessments from the third party, form multi-disciplinary teams to start that work and then complete our prioritized tasks. That's why you've had some policies come forward as a result of these assessments. So that will be ongoing, um, forward.
And that, that basically just means the third-party group coming in and saying, here's what we do well, here's what we need to improve. And as a result, you've seen a number of policies come forward and say, not based on our own assessment, but a third party that says, you've got to make some improvements here. So that's, that's why the policy moves, that's what I think that's a lot of us.
So these next few slides are the nitty-gritty of where we've been, where we are, where we're going. Um, rolling down by each gear. So this is the environment gear. Um, where we've been, you know, we've talked about the social emotional learning with Adam Sands. We contracted with him for three years. This is our last year. Um, we have the equipped classroom materials that go with the, the social emotional learning for the students in every classroom building. Um, Ben Travis consulted with us the last couple of years. We've had our C-Stack training, as you know, and our, our school's safety assessments. This year and moving forward, we continue to have Adam Sands, he, online PD. He's not coming to us anymore. He, we've had three years with him, kinda know his spiel, but it's, it's online, it's online videos, but we have teachers that haven't taken it. So we need to keep that and they are required to take five to six hours of online PD. So that's still one of the options that we provide them. We have the equipped classroom materials for students and teachers to use in the classroom. Um, some in buildings are integrating the positivity project, not all. Um, originally that was a, a building initiative, but we are gonna look at, not necessarily the high school, cause I don't, we found that high school kids really don't respond to them, but possibly all the elementary's moving forward. Um, continuation of C-Stack obviously in the, in the school's safety assessment. The staff supports are, we had emotional, um, poverty, professional development for our parents this year. We brought in a speaker. They're actually giving us another day. I don't know where Jen went, but they're giving us another day. Um, he oversees the therapy. So that's why I was looking for Jen. Hey, trainer. Um, I don't know what that's gonna look like, but we have another day for emotional poverty. Uh, we've had our mental health training, uh, with Jen and her folks at Trails, uh, at the start of the year, which is ongoing in the meetings. And as a reconfiguration, we have, we're starting to, and we're, we're not here, but we're going there with a K-12 MTSS behavior matrix and some common behavior forms for, um, K-4 and K-12. And then some additional committee work to determine, um, what else is involved in the whole job, because that list of components is very big. Reality wise, we know we can't get to all of them. Well, um, it's, it's a goal and we need a committee to help us with it. As it pertains to the, to the management or the collaboration, the collective efficacy, you know about our, yeah, the school's training that our coaches and our administrators went through. And you, that's right, you guys in the, um, C-Stack group. Um, a PLC's collaboration, which is, we all, you know, we've always had. But we had a district reboot last year as a result of some, um, contract changes regarding collaboration and the whole collective efficacy, knowing it's the greatest of X-Sides. This year, we are continuing with Jenny Donohue. She's presenting to the, um, secondary folks, uh, February and March. And she developed five hours of online PD for teachers to take because elementary folks aren't gonna get the Jenny Donohue, but it is an online option for them. And she actually met with us, um, as part of Matt's opening speech with the, after we heard her and just really great things. And again, a highest event size.
There's still some debate about the speech. Had a higher class size.
Yeah.
Rain on serving results, uh.
Well, this came from.
Trust. That's a big trust.
Um, we also have a new teacher slash MTSS coach. And this is why this goes with kind of the transition. Um, Jen Christian was our new teacher coach for a couple of years. We added MTSS because it's a board goal and a, a state requirement. But in, because of the Jenny Donohue collective efficacy research we've been doing, we know we need to focus on it. And the five-six transition because with the A-B lack, we're building in an MTSS ton. So we are also working on the, you know, as you know, the teachers collaborate weekly. We're revising our language for the questions that guide their discussions to be more, more focused on what students learn and, um, master. And that is also goes with the PD that the teachers have received on informative feedback with C-Stacker and Eric Foster. So we're trying to, um, put in our rest practices with the language that they speak during those collaboration classes. Any questions? Okay, moving on. Curriculum. So this is, so you guys know this more than anyone. We, we've had, uh, Fontes and Penel adoption. We've had now the sixth grade, up to sixth grade, K-6. We've had the fifth or 12th grade math pilots, social studies pilots. It's all been brought down. Um, all of those folks are still integrating something new. In addition to this year, we have a K-4 math pilot. That is a beast in itself because it's in four different buildings. So when you do like a, a, a six, eight pilot, for example, we've got two buildings, we've got a couple of department people that are piloting two people in each grade level. This is K-4, a teacher from each building, um, so it's like twenty teachers to try to correlate a Zoom one and talk about a resource. So that's been really fun to me. It is, huh? But it's just finding the time. We get to up to them all. So we're trying to find some unique ways. Um, actually tomorrow, we, we've, we noticed in the first Zoom meeting about the curriculum, because we have the representatives come and speak. They were really struggling and in October, it's always an implementation dip. They get a new resource, they're freaking out. It's new, it's different. They don't know how to piece up the lessons. So you get twenty people on Zoom trying to talk through that. It didn't work. So we scheduled, um, a lesson study with our coaches and the reps. So a lesson study is similar to a lab, but they're gonna, uh, two bachelors are gonna come together and at a building, dive for a lesson, plan it, and then next year go into the classroom and teach it together with the kids. So that starts tomorrow. We're gonna do that with all the grades. Then we have the sixth grade ELA Fontes and Penel. They're dabbling in it to implement it next year because the transition will be, then be five, six, all Fontes and Penel. And then we're balancing these. We have seven, twelve ELA pilot, which is another beast because we're dealing with seven. That's one building, uh, summer and high school.
This is a presentation and a confession.
Deep down inside.
In addition. This is my broil.
I know. I, I, I love that vibe.
So this one is really cool too. All kind of K-5 classrooms received five thousand, it was five hundred thousand dollar grant, um, for our classroom library. And then the PD went with it. That's why K-5 PD is on January to send a reading because in order to get the five hundred thousand dollars, we had to guarantee the hundred percent of our teachers were using PD now. So that's why they're not getting to any time. But if you walk in our classrooms at the elementary level, K-2, very equipped, and we just got the approval for the funding for thirty-five. So this year we're probably gonna purchase without, we weren't gonna get it to my tier, but they, they said you got it. So we're probably gonna purchase it for four or free five or free four this year, but wait for fifth grade till next year because that makes sense. Another new purchase, um, and the business room, so we're just running up, we know all of them. Smartboards and every classroom. Uh, that worked out valueously, um, through us, because it was a line item already in there and we didn't use the funds for something else. So we got to do smartboards for every classroom. That's a huge transition for us too with our tech coaches because now everybody's got a smartboard. Some of them didn't want one, but now they have to.
How many questions didn't happen?
A lot.
Really?
A lot.
Like eighty, twenty? Eighty didn't, twenty did, kind of thing?
It's several, seventy-five, seventy-five percent.
So that's a good question though. The Lynch was equipped because the baby's tied a pond sport.
Uh-huh.
Well, they'll go and some have to. Lynch and Shikwa at home. Murphy probably had three, high school baby had.
Wow.
So that's just, okay. So they all have smartboards and you have to understand too, they don't have a projector anymore because the smartboard works as the projector. So that's a key shift for a teacher who knows how to use a projector and doesn't know how to use a smartboard. So our tech coaches have been really, really busy. Um, as for the reconfiguration planning, we are meeting every bi-weekly with other building, um, and we're talking about, this is a huge one. I could go, I don't. This, this is so much fun. So that, that was huge and I was hoping Jamie was gonna be here. We have, um, okay, so next year, you know, K-4 is gonna, we have to change up the specials a little bit because K-4 or K-2 is, what is it? It's music and then three five is oral language. So that's a standalone nightmare. So anyway, but it's worked. But next year, K-4, let's make it, we'll put a bigger emphasis on five, six, will it, or yes, will it? While we do that, we also have to make changes for our STEM, our technology. We need to bump the rigor. If, if you, you know, and I wanna talk about AI a little bit, but you've heard, AI is here and we need to embrace it. And we, our kids need to be more concerned with technology, not just technology, but problem solving. Because AI, we can search and look, research things in AI, but to problem solve, the next step is where our information is going. So we're helping the rigor in our K-4 tech classes. In addition, we're, we are looking at our five-six electives and realizing that in the A-B schedule, our, our current PLT-W pathway won't give us enough time to get at the level of PLT-W instruction that we do currently. But that's a great opportunity at five-six to build up our STEM elective, which is also related to computer science. The computer science pathway, there are standards in computer science. And so we're looking, we have a committee developed at K-12 level to live in our pathway and let them into the, the tech class. And then, you know, and then it gets to Dandy's, because Dandy's part of this program. So it, it, or this committee and we have a state person coming. Really, it was a, it was a, really having day on us, worrying, thinking, oh, we're gonna. So we've got a few people tomorrow and the next week going to a conference about, uh, computer science. We don't want to call it as computer science, because we don't think it's a sign of court. So we're sticking with STEM, everybody, STEM, science, technology, engineering, math. We didn't go with the A, the art, because there are also gonna be involvement in art. So a lot of discussions continue to be placed on that.
That's great.
Yes. And then, um, when we're thinking of our electives for five-six, we also don't wanna lose the options for kids in the high school year. So it starts in sixth grade right now. Like my son right now is taking AP Spanish and a fourth letter. And he's getting college credit for it as a taxpayer. He started in sixth grade. We don't want to lose that pathway when we go to a five-six building. So we're by it and we've been in lots of meetings with him, things about how to, to, since this is an A-B, but it's been, we've, we found a way to keep that pathway going. Um, and then, oh, this one's really fun. We have new.
Can't introduce every slide.
I know, it's this. Um, we have, uh, the PE teachers and, and Kevin really scared him as a high school, uh, additional PE electives. Our PE classes have been running like this since, I don't know, I'm just here. And they need to change. So, um, we have a, you're gonna hear about it, it needs to go through the board. Their, their deadline is November first and, um, I think I already have one yoga, mindfulness, not, we don't, not all mindfulness, but. Anyway, a yoga course, a lifetime fitness. So, you know, we're, we have kids that don't mind going to jump sometimes and, but they have to go and they have to play basketball, you know, all things, and they don't want to and they don't wanna get dressed and they don't get dressed and then they get marked down. And that, so we've been creating classes for lifetime fitness. So anyway, that's all happening right now and you'll hear more about that in November, because of course, you gotta love us to be done every season.
These are exciting things. Like we're just going through this transition with this bottom. This is fabulous that you're doing all of this work to gear us and continually make us shift. This is why we're here, right here, curriculum.
This is it. And this, and it, this all has to be done by January because counselors come talk to the kids. So that's why we want to be in January. So it's crushing on our, um, but.
Fabulous. And they're having fun.
Honestly, they are. These are, these are refreshingly positive conversations to be a part of. Michelle, as you already anticipated, is doing a tremendous job managing all of this simultaneously. And, you know, not to say, well, I'm not gonna mention it again, but the, the level of work is, as you recall from the high school merger over ten years ago. This time of year, let's say October to February is an absolutely insane time because not only are administrators, central office building folks managing the current school year, they're spending equal amount of time in these committee meetings in preparation for an entirely new ruling following year. So, you know, Michelle is a part of, in many large ways and in some small ways, every single one of those bullets up there, but has also done a really dynamic job of delegating the responsibility and having to think of a lot of the PE budgets. For example, we recognize from that extra, that so the teachers of our six principals at the secondary level are really doing an amazing job of taking their particular bullet point and coming back with recommendations and we are managing that process. But, you know, we want the teachers and the administrators and the bodies to drive those course offering discussions because ultimately at the end of the day, it's them and their counselors who are the ones sitting down with families and kids promoting them. So that, that really doesn't, you don't want that to be a top-down process. You will have this class, you will run that class. It's got to be organic to the degree that there's some ownership there. Because in large part, many courses, especially electives, it's based on the staff you have. the staff who have what they want to teach and what they feel they have a capacity to do well. So that, that is just a limitation of every single school district, right? And you see the programs that grow. Why, why do we have such great relaxed programming? There's a reason. We have great people leading it and there, and there's a passion and a level of community support that's just part of who we are, right? Now, that might not be the case in every district because there isn't an adult or a group of people that feel they have agency to do that. So it's, we have goals and we say what we want as a district leadership. But we're also allowing them to drive, you know, if you hear what you're saying, but what about this? And Michelle's done a masterful job of soliciting that, that feedback.
So this one's pretty heavy as well. The grant fund, we identified some grant funds allocated to each building because we recognize while the elementary, they have, you have reading during those full days. Um, what are we still doing with the building goals? You know, we don't have their one hours, we have full day. So they, like, I'm, they jump on search around, so they have some funds to be creative and how they do some additional quick shots or instructional instructional rounds or specific building PD aligning their goals that we've identified previously from the essential practices. So we can't lose sight of that, so we're trying to be creative and help to work with it. Um, the, the other resources, obviously, the smartboards, um, we have some PD options for teachers that are John Solash. And I, I'm gonna say this again just because it's coming up a lot and in, with an increased focus on AI as it evolves. Um, so each, each month, John Solash provides, um, AI on, online PD that teachers can opt to. Our principals have been tasked with, um, they need to take that and hope your pet will be going to be next. So each October, there's one in October, November, December, and January. There's a, there's a Wednesday webinar that John Solash is on AI. So we're all watching it. And then at our next K twelve meeting, we're gonna, you know, talk about it. I wanna, I wanna, I went to a conference last couple of weeks ago and it was heavy focus on, it was a state, I may not say, um, superintendents conference. So glad I went. Um, I have heavy focus, but there's this one quote, this year seventy-one percent of employers said they would not hire someone without AI skills. Uh, you got eighty-seven percent have not yet received PD on AI. And two percent of the, of the districts are even including the focus. Um, and it's changing every day. Um, I attended a session with a panel of, of superintendents or with critical people that have embraced it with Michigan Virtual for leading that panel discussion. It was, it was, it was great. Long before today, we had our committee meeting, Erin, Erin Cuse, Stacy and Sarah, Tom, Arden, um, type person. And invited Katie Edwards. If you don't know Katie Edwards, she's a genius. She put on AI PD at the start of the school year because virtual, you know, virtual didn't really apply to the stuff that we have. I asked her to come because we need monthly and we're talking about this and Stacy's putting her AI tips out in the news outlets. We're trying to want you guys to see those when they come up. They're the top tips for teachers. We're purposely putting in, you know, try this, because at the conference and everything I'm reading, it's, people are afraid of it. No, you know, I talked to a teacher about this conference, great. Oh, no, I won't be kids using it. No, that's bad, you know, but and they think of all of that. Well, if we don't start embracing it, they are using it more than we are. And we need to be on forefront of this, um, because jobs, they're, they're changing our job force, which I, or kids. So anyway, we met today and I was texting Chad, a part of his presentation, I want Katie to come and present some of this to me. So at K, I've scheduled a meeting, was, you know, next week, our principals to hear the presentation that Katie shared with her staff. And she is, I think, at the two percent that we didn't know about. So I invited her to that. I'm not, I'm excited about that. That's ongoing as well. Um, and then, I don't know, what else do I want to hear about this? I just, go on.
I like hearing about all of your things.
There's another committee, I'll look through all of them. There's another one that's happening monthly. We've contracted with Eric Foster. He was one of the presenters at the sixth bell, um, on grading, um, measuring student learning. We have a committee of teachers coming together and principals. He's gonna facilitate some discussion about that, you know, grading, not for compliance, but grading for learning, going back to that collective efficacy of really measuring the students' learning. Um, that's a big task, but we're starting that discussion. Uh, and this committee will hopefully come, put together a recommendation because the survey results from the PD staff, they're, I think they're right. They just want, they want the district to say, okay, what am I doing? Well, not all, but I think for the most part of those survey results were good and they want to keep moving with it. So their task is to present us with a recommendation, um, for moving forward and that PD, we contracted Eric. He's also providing PD, um, with Jenny Donahue or, you know, Happy Day Jenny Donahue, Happy Day Eric Foster on measuring student learning in February and March. And then we'll provide PD to the staff and then set it up for the transition moving forward. So that's another good one. And then it's gonna be smart schedules being created, uh, right now because we're trying to figure out the whole transition, how this works and FTS, things happening, lots of questions.
Do you rest?
I wish you, I wish you were a little bit more excited about it. I just wish you could put a little bit more effort in, you know, so.
I absolutely love your passion.
I really do.
I mean, that's what sets us apart. I mean, up here, we have a great team that collaborates through that entity. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, now we have a bottom update.
Yes, yes. Thank you for your patience. Uh, we appreciate lots of good information tonight. Um, your favorite, Julia, and my favorite, Julia, is here this evening. Bart, Madalyn, please.
It's Julia, Julia.
That is not her real name, however, I think she prefers it.
Here, that's my name now. Talked about that here.
It's not like TV, Julie.
Okay. We'll do a quick bond update. You guys saw, we sent out a presentation on all this, just kind of the stuff that was completed during the summer. I will touch on some of the projects in summer, also touch where we are in the bond process and then some of the highly anticipated bond projects that are being done. I didn't even have to be here now.
You what? Okay.
Go by it.
You win. You're out. Fired.
Nice. Okay. So typically, the first slide I show you is kind of bottom timeline. Um, I decided to switch it up and kind of show where we're at throughout the process. So as you can see in that time chart here, we are just over fifty percent done with construction within the bond. So you think that construction journey started fall of twenty twenty-three. And roughly just over one calendar year, we put roughly fifteen million dollars worth of construction in place with about three million left to go with the elementary additions and high school additions. So there's been a lot done in a calendar year and a lot in the next calendar year as well. Um, next calendar year, we're anticipating an estimate of eleven point five million dollars that are going in. A lot of those are some of the highly anticipated projects that everybody's been waiting on since the bond has passed. But I will touch on those a little bit later. So that will leave roughly six point six million dollars worth of construction to complete in that twenty twenty-six um, year. And that will be the bond as quick as we started. I feel like it's gonna be over before we know it. So it's kind of a quick overview as far as financial update on that. We'll be on to the high school. You guys have drove past the high school. That is definitely a project that has been up and construction has happened very quickly. We, we started it probably April. And now we've got brick completely installed, probably the science lab addition, we're mostly done on a multi-purpose space in the weight room. We've got lot fillings starting in the science labs, which means we will be painting soon as well. We've got water lines, stuff work in, on the science lab additions. We're going to be setting rooftop units next week and trying to get heat going. That way we don't have to worry about any temporary heat throughout winter when we try and finish this, we'll just be using regular heat. And then we've talked kind of next steps as far as what the weight room will look like, which we kind of talked about that last on with Chad here as far as the new equipment and flooring. But we also are starting the conversations as far as furniture. What are these science labs going to look like furniture-wise once the construction piece is finished? So we're kind of just dabbing into those conversations of what we like, what we don't like, what these rooms are gonna look like once the construction piece is finished. So with the science labs and multi-purpose in the weight room addition, we are trending to be unscheduled to complete prior to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year or the renewed reversion. Elementary school additions. So that's, as we're going on, we have the gymnasiums for Murphy, Turrell, and Schickler. Um, here are some interior photos as far as what the gyms look like. So far, we've got paint going on in the whole space. You'll see the blue strip that goes around. We have exterior doors that are being installed, so you can secure that space. We've got ceiling grid that's going in. Today, we started laying out and going to install those, um, lightning bolts on panels that will go on the wall. We've got those going. Um, we are working on pulling in the power so that we have power to all of the additions. We should have power completed probably beginning of next week and hopefully getting those rooftop units fired up probably Friday, if not beginning of next week. That way we can start getting that as a controlled space temperature rod, so we'll hold heat in. Um, quick next steps as far as the gym additions. We'll have final paint that will have to go on. Gym equipment is going to start getting installed at work the next week and then we'll work our way around all of the additions. We've got interior doors and hardware that are gonna be installed, uh, rooftop startup. And then we also have flooring. Before we can install flooring though, we need to have that, or controlled space. That way we don't have, put flooring down, it gets too cold, it gets too hot, and then it starts popping up. We have to make sure that gym floor is good with that.
And we've been really lucky with weather.
Very lucky with weather. Um, one big obstacle that we do have is consumers' energy. We have to do a upgrade of the gas system over at Murphy Elementary and we have to do a meter update at Turrell. We have Turrell extended. We're still working through getting the gas upgrades for Murphy's to the consumers' energy. Unfortunately, they are not a company that goes by that timeline, but we are trying to work through and communicate. And trying to get them on.
Do they know who they're talking to?
My guys won't. So we're kind of working through those. So target finish will be this month. Obviously, we'll work it through some of those issues. So following the completion of them and the teachers taking over and moving in, we will have a grid opening of those spaces that we'll schedule over the days. Okay, um, so the HVAAC, if you remember, this is the same slide that was shown in August. Um, I just wanted to highlight what was completed in this summer. So you had five point six million dollars for BIPAP four, which was the HVAAC and bathroom additions. That was completed in the summer months. If you look at Turrell, that was completed in five weeks. And it was very round five weeks, but we got it completed in five weeks. That was a little bit. So total number wise, we're looking at fifty unit milliliters, eleven rooftop units, and two multi-zone units that were completed in roughly three months. So it was very, that's imperious and it did not come without its challenges. So just because we have the equipment, we would love to hope that it meant we would have no issues with that stuff. We have brand new equipment that we have to have serviced, warranty already as soon as it's installed. And then the topic of temperature controls also came into play. And as much as it took time for us to tweak and get it right and this classroom wasn't cooling, that classroom wasn't cooling, or this classroom was sixty-two degrees. It came with the good side of it gave me and my team the opportunity to go one-on-one with these teachers and talk to them and let them listen to us and us speak to them and what they're going through. So we would go classroom to classroom, is everything working right? I can walk into probably almost every elementary school and they know who I am now. Unfortunately, it was because I had issues, but it also creates a personal level that I feel like we may not have before. So that was a plus side of, you know, a challenge that we were in this discussion. So we appreciate everybody's patience as we worked through that, all the staff, all the teachers, as we worked through all of that construction piece. If you haven't seen the transformation of the bathrooms at the elementary schools, I've got some photos here, some good before and after where we did partitions, sinks, and some, we did paint, and we did a lot of support. So we did three sets of bathrooms at Turrell, two sets at Schickler, and two sets at One P. So it's definitely an upgrade, something that they needed and something that is a statement piece.
The pictures do not do it justice.
No.
You go into these bathrooms, it is unbelievable.
It is. And it's such a transformation. You look at the pink, we don't have the pink anymore, we have black. And you incorporate that lightning bolt in those bathrooms and now we're gonna incorporate it in the new gyms. And you get that forefront to it and it, it definitely makes a difference. Okay, the bus garage. So these are kind of photos from a while ago, um, as a breakdown. We have about half of it that's topped out. So we had asphalt come in, do a base layer, which was three inches, and then come in, do the top there or two, and do striking. So we got half of it done now and then we'll move together back probably next week and kind of finish that project. Um, we have definitely worked closely with Linda and her whole interior team over there to make sure that they knew what was going on, especially when school started. Have their corner where the buses could come in, what entrance they could use, where they were parking. And now as we work our way around topping it out, okay, Linda, we need the buses over here, you can park over here, we're gonna be in this corner. And it's definitely been a very close process throughout the whole entire construction period of the bus garage. So it definitely, like all civil parking lot projects, also had its challenges. Between soils and undercuts, we have little sand pockets that would basically just hold the water. And as soon as we did demo and we took the asphalt off, it just started bubbling up. Obviously, with the changer that was approved, we upgraded the water main. We had a leak that's somewhere up in the building, so we took care of that as well. So now that will be a completed bus garage. I mean, Mark and I were out there today and if there's no buses there, you lose the magnitude of what that is. Like without buses there, it is huge lot. And we're only looking at half of it. And so, you know, we're making sure we got these spaces lined up right for Linda and the team. And it's definitely going to be a statement piece once it's finished.
To explain the, I don't know, water, it's called retention, you have to put in that, that doesn't change from our initial.
The one that the city made.
Yes.
Okay, so once, pretty much any civil project that we do, that ends up having to go to the city, they do their review as far as, okay, can with the water that's gonna end up going, there's a simple net handle it. So we did have to do some additional underground retention. That way the city wasn't getting the massive blast of water. So we kind of had to work with the city on that. We've also worked with the city with the water main to make sure. So we've kind of had a close relationship with the city on this project as well. And we've got everything worked out over there. And everything came together very quickly right before school started. I know it wasn't finished, but it's time school started. But it definitely, with the challenges we had, it came together very quick to be able to do a lot of that space from school to start. Okay, now for the highly anticipated projects that everybody's been waiting on. Um, the picture that you have here is a rendering of the new PNC entrance. So we have kind of gone through as far as what the park's gonna look like and make those decisions. So we have kind of gone through as far as what the work's gonna look like and make those decisions. We do have a meeting next week, I believe, to just start picking the final finishes of that P A C so that we go top to bed. We all know what it's gonna look like and they can update, you know, have some more renderings, kind of see what it's gonna be like. So that is the P A C. On, on top of having the new addition for the new NS, we're also doing a back new bus loop that will not only enhance the buses for drop-off, but it will also post additional parking for that P A C area. Then you have some interior high school renovations that will include ceilings and lights. Uh, bathroom renovations, getting rid of those classrooms that have that partition wall. We'll do some drywall walls in there. We're gonna upgrade the fire alarm, we're gonna upgrade the fire suppression and then just some little mechanical edges here and there. Then you have the Schickler driveway that would be definitely a big item on the list. You will have the rolling corner playground.
It's gonna be renamed Julia's Drive.
It is, and I'm looking forward to it. I just don't know if they're gonna do St. Jude or if it's gonna be.
You got it.
Like, I don't know yet, but it will be my driveway.
What?
I thought it was gonna be wanderway.
Well, I believe you're gonna be under it.
We might not put in the name change with city now, that way it would be open. We can put up. Um, so schedule wise for all of this stuff, so for the P A C, we're hoping to start construction in the spring and then go through December, so end of the calendar year on that one. And then as far as the Schickler driveway, interior high school renovations and the playground was going to be summer of twenty twenty five. That way we're good for the third reconfiguration.
It's gonna be a busy summer this year.
It is gonna be a very busy summer. A lot of it's gonna be centralized at the high school, but I mean, considering that it's roughly eleven point five million dollars we're planning to put in, it's, it's gonna be a lot of moving parts and communication with the high school and then as far as Schickler. It's definitely gonna be another busy summer, not as busy as last summer. Um, we plan on awarding, I think it's December awarding. It's when we plan on awarding that that's the pack that will incorporate the interior of the high school, Schickler driveway and the P A C. Um, we're still trying to work out little details as far as the playground setup, the quality, it'll be set up a package just because that's a select bidders for that. But it will kick it off, December, it's a middle process and it will just be a fast road process throughout all of that. Next is the high school party work in summer twenty six. So you have the north parking lot and you have that big bus loop in the back that will be next summer. So we'll complete both of those. So the high school will definitely be a very busy reconfiguration. And hopefully some of the interior stuff, we'll be able to pull ahead. It all depends on what project we get, if they wanna work second shift, if they want to pull ahead and, and work on some ceiling tiles throughout the night, whatever pattern makes sense. We're gonna try to pull ahead as much as we can with summers the way they are. It's better to pull ahead in spring break or, you know, or you guys will pay for some second shift or mezzanine area, you know, they can work while school's in. So we'll, we'll work out those logistics, but it'll be a lot. And then, yeah, with the science lab additions and one more playground for fifth grade, we are going to complete one of the main objectives of the block, which is the grade reconfiguration. So we'll be ready for it and all of the peers getting ready for it.
We're here first.
We're gonna be, we're gonna be ready for the change, happy to be a part of it. It's gonna be exciting, yes. Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes our presentations for this evening. We will head into our reports. We have our teaching, learning and technology committee. Mrs. LeBar, would you please share us the report?
Yes, the teaching, learning, technology committee met on September thirteenth at ten A M. Committee members present, where myself, Jamie Hofer and Sam Lipka. Others attending, Matt Wondre, Michelle Bradford, Jenny Munch and Mary Moss. Meeting was called for order at ten via Zoom. We discussed the math and E L A pilot. Michelle Bradford explained that the district is undergoing a K-four math pilot and a seven twelve E L A pilot. Teacher training, subordinates in place and piloting is underway. As for board policy and guidelines, the procedure for textbook pilot adoption includes initiating a text material study, selecting resources to pilot and textbooks and accompanying materials should be piloted in a normal classroom situation for at least one trimester before being recommended for adoption. Classroom libraries update, as discussed at a previous meeting, thirty-five J grant funds have been awarded to the district in the Amalnum. Five hundred and sixty-seven thousand to be utilized for K-five classroom libraries. In order to receive the grant funds, a hundred percent of the K-five teachers must participate in Jandar Johnson professional development and two hours of online professional development on classroom libraries. To date, all K-two teachers have received five hundred books, bookshelves and storage. After completion of the P D, the second half of the money will be received to purchase classroom libraries for grades three through five. Note, all books are labeled as the peer community school's property and will remain in the district and in the appropriate grade level. Grade level transition update. Michelle Bradford explained that the district is continuing to collaborate on the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six district transition. Meetings are being held to finalize K-four classes, sorry, courses and playground equipment, five, six standards and grading, seven, eight and nine through twelve courses and electives. The district will consult with Eric Foster to help facilitate teacher and district committee meetings and planning sessions. There was an overnight field trip request, a field trip request for the Turl fifth grade students to travel to Camp Cook mechanic in Fenton, Michigan on June third and fourth, twenty twenty-five was discussed. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend approval of this field trip with the condition that every student have the ability to attend regardless of financial ability. It will be placed on the October second board agenda for full of worth consideration. The meeting adjourned at ten forty-three A M.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. LeBar. And that concludes our reports for tonight. So we'll head into our action items. We have our consent grouping, approval of minutes of September four, twenty twenty-four, we're doing a meeting. We have the overnight field trip requests for Turl fifth grade students to travel to Camp Cook mechanic in Fenton, Michigan on June thirty-fourth of twenty twenty-five. And then secondly, adoption of board policies. Policy thirty-two, thirty-one, outside activities of staff. Policy fifty-seven, thirty, equal access for non-disciplinary students to do activities. And then policy ninety-one, sixty, public attendance of school events. Are there any consent grouping items anybody wishes to have in the? Okay, hearing none, can I get a motion?
I make a motion that the reading of the ministry rate and consent item, the consent agenda item being approved and presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Mrs. McKenna or Mrs. LeBar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Ms. Spudman says aye, motion carried. Okay, and that concludes our action items tonight, so we'll turn it over to any board member of communication.
Oh, I have some.
I always look your way, cause I know you're.
You gotta leave it off.
And I like it. You lead us off.
I love it.
Great stuff.
I had the absolute honor of attending the C M U and U day this past Saturday. And with my son, we did a tour and to my wonderful surprise, the marching band students were there and they were going to participate at the halftime game for C M U versus San Diego State. So of course we wanted to say, and I, myself and my son were able to sit with the band and we had front row seats, it was awesome. And they performed at halftime and this is their second year in a row participating and they are led by Mrs. Alexis Johnson and Mr. Daniel Hunt. And the marching band wants us to know that on that band day, that it was featured more than eleven hundred high school band students. In addition to three hundred piece Chippewa marching band were there. So it was wonderful to see them during halftime and perform. And they also wanted us to know that on September fourteenth, they scored a ninety, a seventy-nine point four out of a hundred, which is pretty good for an early season competition and they were ranked third in their class. And they, they participated at that competition in Gibraltar. And they also would like us to know that they have their final competition coming up on October twenty-sixth at Brandon High School. The performance time is currently one forty-five P M. They encourage all of the supporters to come and see their last big performance. Uh, it was an absolute joy to see the students. I mean, it was hot, but I mean, it was wonderful to see all of these high school students in their full everything and participating and the smiles and it, and there was a lot of parent support as well there. Uh, because as I said, it was hot, there were some kids that needed to be rehydrated and taken into the shade. And there was just such tremendous support for our band. And I just wanna make sure that everybody who doesn't stay at halftime and watch them when they're playing the football game, give it a chance because they are phenomenal. And the amount of hours that goes into their performance and just all of the time and all of the dedication that these students give. And I know that we, we so much honor and appreciate the athletics of the fact that our arts are just awesome. Kicking butt too. I mean, it's just so wonderful to see that and to, and I just encourage people, the next band concerts, whether it's the symphony, the jazz, I mean, any of them, participate. Go and watch, go and listen, these students, this is their thing. And they are a great group of kids and they support each other. I mean, I could see it just in the stands. I just want everybody to know what amazing, wonderful arts program we have led by Mr. Hunt and Mrs. Johnson. So that's what I wanted to share tonight.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? You good?
Good.
Um, I just wanna say Jeff, thank you and your team for bringing in the things you're doing for a challenging A group and bringing them together. I think it's phenomenal and I'm glad that we already have these opportunities to be able to help motivate them. Um, and then Michelle, I know we joke with you, but we really do appreciate all the efforts that it takes leading us to have what we have in our district. So I want you to know how much we're grateful. And everybody who participates in bringing it all together, but we still need someone to help lead us there, right? So appreciate everyone. And then Julia, thank you again for sharing the bottom date and helping us maximize our funding to get what we need to make our improvements for our kids. They deserve it, so thank you for that as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Wondre.
Thank you, Madam President. What a great point about, you know, hard hours, that person will just maximize these, factor these out. That's a really important point, you know, and that's why I like it because partnership is important. Um, you know, execution of this, this setting of these limited hours and spreading it as, as far as we can, you know, wide as we can. Really appreciate it, Julia. And that's very useful about involving relationships with the individual teachers and, and meeting and their level of support, right? And the whole point of this was the quality of classroom environment where both students and staff were coming from. And so that's a really important piece, right? I, I really appreciate that. Um, it's all cold visit time, so as we've shared with you in the past, the entire cold team visits each building and apartment to just share kind of the state of the district address. Um, it's also a great opportunity for us to recognize our years of service and recipients. So at that ten, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty year mark, we recognize some of those thirty-plus year people that opened the day. We'll reintroduce those folks when it's appropriate, but also get a chance to just share what's going on in the district, answer any questions from staff, the day that they want to present to us in that setting. Um, we have some great discussions with our, with our boys, right? It's, it's typically fun, a lot of humor, candid conversation, get down to any degree. You have some, there's gonna be lots of questions this year as it relates to the transition, things relative to staffing and the bond and how things are gonna impact me and my building. And so we look forward to that. We posted that one of the books and I think eleven to go, ten to go, every really every department. Thank you to Michelle, thank you to Summer for a great presentation. Uh, I really appreciate the work. Thank you Jeff and Rich for bringing the Marines to be a part of this today. It was great to have the kids and their families to be a part of, part of the board. It's always good to have them here and obviously please extend our thanks to the staff members who, to them, by their evening, come here and share what's going on. You know, we oftentimes, I think, you know, we get bogged down in the nuts and bolts of what we do, which is teaching and learning and that's important, right? That's our core function, that's why we're here. But it really is nice to see here some of the extra things that schools are tasked with doing now to help kids learn in a more effective way. Not replacing anyone's responsibility in the communities or the families, but appreciating the challenges that public schools face today with, um, helping educate the entire child, right? There's a lot we can't take for granted. And so, but what you guys shared this evening and some of that stuff, I know a lot of us are thinking the same thing, but I wish my school had that in the thirty, forty. Probably never reach, sorry Craig, sixteen, sixteen years.
Get it right.
Is this thing on? As you think, I would like to have fun here, the good school. Now we got tough job. And, 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 and I love the word wall that Karen shared, the word love and humor were two words that kids decided to share about what are the kind of prevailing sentiments and emotions in this room at that particular time. And if you can laugh, you can learn. If you can laugh, you're engaged, right? And I know maybe people watching this meeting sometimes relate to that, so a lot of laughing and that, that's okay. We love doing what we do, we love our jobs, and guys love volunteerism, that's incumbent with being a board member. Um, you know, Julia, how much fun you have when you come here?
So much fun.
See, exactly. That sounds solicitous.
Right.
Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is the district, uh, Michelle mentioned the importance that safety and security is taking in the district. Not just from, um, a punchline as this is important to us, but actual policy and procedural change. Uh, the district crisis team is a big part of that. And that is not just a group, that involves a number of employees, twenty-plus employees representing all units of the district. Um, you know, obviously leaders included, but teaching staff and social emotional support staff and operational staff. Um, get together on a fairly frequent basis to discuss implementation of that practice and policy. So you approve the policy, that district crisis team is distilling it down to the building level of the practices, procedures, the policies, the things that are gonna make a difference in the lives of our kids as it relates to things like Alice training into drills, debriefing with students after a crisis situation, right? Really taking it to the next level, implementing new keys and security camera system and all the physical hardware stuff, but also the software stuff as well. So those meetings are beginning in earnest for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that's all I wanted to update the board on with that and you, that would balance my time and how's that?
Thank you, Superintendent Wondre. With that, I'll make a motion.
Can you please, I'm not here to adjourn.
Well, well, I can come from all of us.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.